Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Regular Meeting of June the 24th, 2025. Meeting has been called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. Thank you very much. For those that are able, if you would rise with me and join the City Council on the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone. Item four, public comment. Do we have any?
I have no speaker cards.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on items not on the agenda? Okay. We'll move to number five, which is announcements and presentations. We do have two proclamations. First one is Disability Pride Month, and I'll just read a couple of the "whereas's." Whereas on July 26, 1990, President George H. W. Bush signed the Americans with Disability Act into law, which protects any individual with disabilities against discrimination, as well as gives those with disabilities the same opportunities for everyone else. And whereas one in four adults in the United States of America currently live with some type of disability, and whereas Disability Pride Month remembers the struggles that people with disabilities have faced in the past and their preservation while fighting for the rights that people with disabilities enjoy today. Now therefore, I, Rico E. Medina, proclaim this month as Disability Pride Month and pledge to continue to expand the accessibility and inclusion within San Bruno, while also encouraging all members of the community to celebrate, honor, and embrace those with disabilities. Next, we're going to have a proclamation recognizing July 2025 as National Park and Recreation Month. And Travis, are you here or Damian? The only reason I say that is because there's 14 "whereas's," and I don't know that I'll read them all. So I'm gonna read two, and I'm gonna let them hear from you, which I think is much better than hearing from me. Most people will tell you. Whereas in 2024, the city of San Bruno embarked on an exciting new chapter to the commitment to the community, the health, the engagement, and sustainability with the grand opening of the Centennial Plaza and the much anticipated award-winning recreation and aquatic center that we're in today. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim July 2025 as Park and Recreation Month in the city of San Bruno, and encourage residents to celebrate by exploring our parks, visiting Centennial Plaza, experiencing the new recreation and aquatic center, participating in senior and youth programming, and enjoying the recreational opportunities that our community and the quality of life. To the Director.
Thank you, Mayor Medina. Members of council, Travis Carlin, Community Services Director. Thank you very much for this proclamation. We really appreciate it. I think that this shows that the City Council is invested in our parks and recreation here in the city of San Bruno. We've done a lot of tremendous things over the last year, like opening Centennial Plaza. We're on the cusp of opening Florida Park soon, later on this summer. We also have some exciting new projects that are gonna be happening down at Posey Park along San
We're gonna go to item D for now and receive the presentation on the pre-4th of July safety
Mateo Avenue. And just most recently, we just resurfaced our tennis courts. So it's great to see a lot of people out and about and enjoying our parks. And I want to say
operations, and we'll hear from our chiefs.
Should be able to share a screen.
a special thank you to the staff on the Community Services team that work with me day in and day out, and our volunteers, our Parks and Recreation Commissioners, our Senior Commissioners, and our Arts and Culture Commissioners. I really appreciate all the hard work that
All right. Give me just a moment. All right.
they put in. And we put together a small slideshow for you to enjoy tonight.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Ari Delay, your Fire Chief. Gathered here this evening with my partner in public safety, our new chief, Matt Lathene. We're here to give you a brief presentation on our 4th of July activities for both police and fire for this upcoming 4th of July celebration. I'll get started, and then I'll turn it over to Chief Lathene, and then we'll do a quick wrap-up with you for any questions you may have. I'd like to just start by announcing again, this year, as in most years in the past, we'll do a short public safety announcement. We're gonna schedule to, later on this week, the chief and I are scheduled to record with one of the police officers, a short public safety announcement, talking about fire safety and fireworks, and it's, you know, the importance of storage of fireworks, and how to use them in and around San Bruno when it comes to safe and sane fireworks, and some of the things not to do with some of the non-safe-and-sane fireworks. In regards to San Bruno Fire Department and what our operation looks like for this year, just as we have in the past, we'll be in unified command with the San Bruno Police Department. And what that means for us is that we're on a united front. We have common communications and a common plan that we work off to be able to support the operations through the 4th of July. And the Fire Department will have all its fire prevention staff on duty. It's an important component for us. Not only do they do the firework booth inspections to make sure compliance is there for the firework booth operators themselves, but also to be able to do some of the enforcement and response that evening of the 4th itself. We'll also have an extra engine on duty that day. We're gonna staff the Type 6, the CALOEES Type 6 that we have at a fire station 52 with three additional personnel. And what that will allow us to do is have some extra capacity there should we have a fire in the community, and be able to add some additional resources for us. Many of the other communities across the peninsula do the same thing. They add resources to it. The one thing that I would note is we have some of the extra funding to help support and offset some of the costs from some of the operators as well. We also provide mandatory safety meetings with all the booth operators, starting on the 28th. Our inspectors, they've done a safety briefing with the booth operators already, but they do annual, or correction, daily safety inspections at all the booths on a daily basis out there during the fireworks sales to make sure they're in compliance with not only the laws, but some safety components as well. And again, we do that joint public safety announcement. And I wanted to bring to everybody's attention, this is an important thing, especially for the public, is the logo that you see on the right and the symbol there is the State Fire Marshal's Safe and Sane Fireworks emblem that's required on any firework that you would consider safe and sane that are legal here in the city of San Bruno. To utilize any of those fireworks, we want to make sure that people recognize that that symbol is on the fireworks. If it doesn't have that symbol on the fireworks, it's typically not a safe and sane firework, and it has a lot of danger that's associated with it. We've had some significant injuries in our community with illegal fireworks, especially some of the more commercial pyrotechnics. Those tend to be, they have fast fuses, and they can injure and kill people, you know. And so we want to make sure that, you know, it's really readily recognized to look for that State Fire Marshal stamp of approval. Additionally, we recommend that we make sure people keep the fireworks displays away, at least 10 feet away from structures themselves, anything flammable there, and make sure we're not in presence of any flammable grass or brush or anything like that throughout the community to make sure we're safe. And making sure we have a hose, an extinguisher, any other water supply next to us and ready in case a fire did start. And one of the most important things here is this last bullet point on this slide, is don't dispose of any recently used fireworks and garbage cans. We've had three major structure fires in our community over the years from improperly disposed of fireworks, both illegal and safe and sane fireworks. And people place them in a plastic trash receptacle in their homes, thinking that everything's great, and they go to sleep, you know, because the festivities are over, and the fireworks can actually reignite the garbage can itself and cause a fire, damaging some of the homes. We've had three major fires of that nature. So I just want to make sure that we bring that to attention. We'll talk about that in the public service announcement, but we recommend putting it in a bucket of water or in a trash receptacle that's metal. With that, I'll turn it over to Chief Lathene about the Police Department's operations.
All right. Thank you, Chief Delay. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Matt Lathene. It is my absolute privilege to be here for the first time as your Chief of Police. As we prepare for our 4th of July response, like Chief Delay mentioned, we're taking a collaborative and unified approach between both public safety departments with fire and police. Our efforts really start well in advance of the 4th of July with robust outreach and communication efforts, really making sure that our community understands the rules, that while we, you know, permit safe and sane use, that we really want to draw the distinction about what is illegal and prohibited, and give an opportunity to make smart choices. We will be making contact before the 4th with previous violators and residences, raising to their awareness the rules and giving them the opportunity to make smart decisions. We will be also staffing in advance of the 4th of July, extra details where we have officers coming in looking to address those who are violating our municipal code. Again, as we now move into the 4th of July, our approach will be similar to years past. I'll describe it as all hands on deck. We will be having a large contingency of additional staff, not just officers, but also support staff, to make sure that we're prepared to address what happens on the 4th of July. That will likely consist, and will consist of marked, but also unmarked, units responding to calls for service, but also what they observe on their own while they're conducting high-visibility patrol. We'll be also utilizing technology, really using our drone devices to get up and get aerial views of those who are in violation, and taking enforcement action when it's appropriate. Go to the next slide. All right. Now moving into kind of the safe and sane fireworks. It is permitted per the municipal code, starting on June 28th, from noon to 9:00 p.m., and on the 4th, from noon until 11:00 p.m. We want to remind our community that use on private property only, at least 10 feet away from any structures, and as well, it's not permitted in parks, it's not permitted in public parking lots, schools, or open space areas, and that misuse of the safe and sane fireworks is dangerous and illegal, and any violation of our municipal code carries a hefty fine of $1,000. If it flies in the air, or if it explodes, it's a great way to kind of advise our community, it's probably illegal. If it doesn't have the Fire Marshal seal, like Chief Delay mentioned, it's illegal. We have an example right here on the screen. Again, as I mentioned, the administrative citation carries a $1,000 fee for use or possession of illegal fireworks. We also can take enforcement action with social host citations. So if homeowners are permitting the use of illegal fireworks, they also can be held responsible. We want our community to know that. And as our community looks to report violations on the 4th of July, we really encourage them, only report violations with specific suspect information that's actionable, so our units can go out there and look to actually take enforcement. The majority of citations do not result from resident reports. We're happy to respond. We will respond as able, but also, our staff will be taking that action when they see it. And that concludes our presentation. We're happy to field any questions or comments.
Thank you. Questions or comments from colleagues? Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's great seeing you two there. My question is, or my comment basically is, to really emphasize that calling up and saying there's some fireworks over by City Park or over in the avenues, it's like, that isn't helpful. And why it's so important to be very specific, I wonder if you could maybe explain that. And it's to discourage people from calling in if they don't really see where it's coming from. Maybe just so people don't call as much this year and tie up the lines.
Yeah. No, I'll field that first one. What I'll tell you is that while most times, we always want to encourage our community to report, right, any public safety issue, really on the 4th of July, where we're really inundated with calls for service, we want actionable information, stuff that our units can go out and actually address. Oftentimes, if people are calling, it does create an expectation that we're gonna be able to do something with it, but if they're going to call, we really want that specific information about location, suspect description, so that when our units respond, they know what they're looking for.
Tom? Any, Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've had discussions here among the council about how much we're willing to actually spend for this heightened surveillance that we do during the 4th, and we've lost a considerable amount of revenue from the sale of the fireworks over the past couple of years. And so as we think, and I guess, you know, the cows are out of the barn, and so there's no, I know that this is already planned for this year, but I'm hoping that when we get the report after the 4th on, you know, how the night went, we can also have some evaluation of how the additional resources were used, whether they were, you know, absolutely necessary, what would have been the impact during the evening had we not had those resources. I mean, other cities around us have to make do, and I think not everybody does enforcement the way we do. I think we're kind of unique and special in what we do, and I've done ride-alongs both with police and fire, and so I've kind of seen how crazy it is on those nights, even with all the extra personnel. It's absolute chaos out there. So I just want to request that, you know, there be some attention to, you know, thinking about, you know, had we not had the additional resources, could we still have pulled it off? Looking forward, can we do something that's not as impactful to the budget and maybe let some of our personnel actually take the day off and enjoy the holiday for once?
Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you for the questions. That's something actually we're looking at, is honing in the cost and really kind of tightening things up to make it as efficient as we can while maintaining the public safety at the same time. And one of the decisions that we did make recently was the decision not to do a mailer to the community. A mailer is about $8,000 to $10,000 in total between, you know, printing production costs and mailing itself, and oftentimes those mailers, although the message is important, I think that the costing of that is not really get the effect that we're looking for. So we're gonna utilize our social media channels that don't have a lot of cost associated with it and try to save some of those costs and pare down anything that we can on that front. And we'll have a full report for the council after the 4th of July, and we'll come back to you with those numbers.
No, and I'll just add to respond to that focus. I've only been here a short time, but thanks to my team, I can tell you, we are taking a data-driven approach to really trying to say, hey, how do we make sure we ensure public safety, but not chipping the scale to be kind of unbalanced with a fiscal impact? I won't divulge before the event what that's led to in terms of operational changes, but it has, and be happy to share with the council after the 4th.
And then to the police chief, what are you doing July 4th?
I'll have the good honor of be riding around and working on the 4th of July. I'm looking forward to it.
Okay. Be with the team. All right. Thank you very much to both for that. And now let's go to item C, recognition of our outgoing interim police chief and welcoming our newest member to the staff and to the team, our new chief, Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So since January, Susan Manheimer served as the city's interim police chief. The city was fortunate to lure Chief Manheimer out of retirement to lead our police department. For those of you who may not be aware, Chief Manheimer led the San Mateo Police Department for 20 years. Before that, she rose through the ranks of the San Francisco Police Department. Most recently, she has also held interim chief assignments in the cities of Oakland and San Leandro. Susan is a trailblazer for women in law enforcement. Actually, let me correct that. She's a trailblazer for anyone in law enforcement. Of her many talents, she is an incredible believer in her people. She supports them while holding them firmly accountable. She is exceptionally wise, considerate, and kind, the best kind of chief you can ask for. And if you have the pleasure of meeting Susan, she is a force. You always know when she enters the room. She has a presence and an infectious personality. She draws you in, and you don't even know what's happening. And because of these characteristics, she has been nicknamed the Friendly Tornado. On behalf of the executive team, the City Council, and the San Bruno Police Department, thank you, Susan, for sharing this time with us. We are proud to call you an honorary Team Number One Member Emeritus. And this is the sign for Susan Way.
Thank you all so much. This is so amazing. You know, I was telling someone, first, when you come to a place, because I've been in interim at a bunch of places, they sort of start saying things about you and giving you little nicknames behind your back, but you know you're fully embraced and adopted when they actually start calling you Friendly Tornado to your face. And so, you know, I did not know much about San Bruno. And I want to thank Alex first of all. I met him the first time, and I think we ended up in coffee for three hours, and it's been an absolute joy. Alex, thank you so much for not only bringing me into this lovely city and wonderful department, but really supporting and backing your department heads, your city staff, the work we do, and working so well with council. City Council, Mayor, and all of you, I have totally enjoyed the amount of passion. Each of you brings your own lens to it, and it's pretty fun and amazing to work with you all, and we've done a lot of work together. It has not been, for lack of things to do, there's been a lot. And I just wanted to mention, for my peers, your department directors, a pretty amazing group and really work hard to struggle to make sure that they both support each other and leverage really for the city and for you all, the work that we do. And finally, just to the men and women of the San Bruno Police Department, they are small but mighty, and I know that they're a very special group. When I first was asked to come on board, my daughter had done some work, and she goes, oh, Mom, there's a special place in San Bruno and the San Bruno PD, and she was so right. It's a family. They're resilient. They're strong. They're proud, and they're especially dedicated to San Bruno, and that is really a treasure. So it's just been a joy. Thank you all so much. I will always treasure having been here, and I really appreciate the support you all have given me and the work you all do, and we've done together. So thank you so, so much. And to Matt, thank you, brother.
It is hard to follow Susan Manheimer, but let's give it a try. So we have been doubly fortunate as a city in attracting Matt Lathene as our new police chief. Chief Lathene joined us last week. Some of you may know Matt from his 25 years of law enforcement, most recently with the city of San Mateo, where he worked for Chief Manheimer. Some of you may know Matt from his wife, Kelly, who serves on the city's planning commission. Some of you may know Matt from his two sons, who attend our public schools here in town, and some of you may know Matt as your neighbor, since he has lived in San Bruno for almost 20 years. I'm truly excited that we're able to attract someone with the education and credentials that Chief Lathene brings to the position. Certainly, working for Chief Manheimer, and most recently, former San Bruno Police Chief and current San Mateo Chief, Ed Barberini, well prepares him for this new chapter in his career. Chief Lathene will be formally sworn in on Monday, July 17th, here at the rack. Tonight, I'm honored to introduce to the mayor and the city council, San Bruno Police Chief, Matt Lathene.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, city council members, it's an honor to be here. I want to start off just by echoing City Manager Alex McIntyre to thank outgoing Chief Manheimer, who I did work for in San Mateo Police. She is quite a force, aptly nicknamed the Friendly Tornado. It is a great privilege to be able to stand here tonight as your Chief of Police, and I am just honored to be able to join the San Bruno Police Department. I know what a phenomenal group of individuals work there, not just from working in policing in the county, but also being a resident for 20 years. So I'm deeply kind of just thankful to be here. I want to also thank City Manager McIntyre for your faith and opportunity to serve here, for the very warm welcome from everyone, from council, from the other department heads, but also, lastly, from the men and women of the department. They've really opened their arms and their hearts. They've welcomed me. It's been a phenomenal week and a few days, and I'm just looking forward to continuing, right, the legacy of strong policing and working with the community. So thank you very much.
And to both chiefs, the city of San Bruno, the city council, the community, I want to thank Susan for assisting us in the transition. Want to thank and welcome our new chief, Matt. As I said to him even before he assumed office, I said, take care of your team and take care of this community. Those are the first and only objectives that should be there. We have a good department. I'm very proud of them. Honored to have them wear the San Bruno badge, as you now do. So you're being entrusted to continue on the reputation of this department and this community, and we appreciate you not only being a resident, but as chief, which doesn't happen much anymore, or is not even allowed to be required, but we welcome you and thank you, and to your family, for the service that you will give to our community. So thank you, Susan. Thank you, Matt. Now, was there any public comments on those items?
No speaker cards.
Okay. Let's move on to consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be one single public comment period for all items in this section unless a council member requests to pull an item for a separate vote. Anything for a separate vote?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I will ask to pull item H.
H has been pulled for a separate vote. Any other items? Any public speakers other than H?
I have one speaker card.
Other than H?
Oh, I apologize.
That's all right. Back to council, any action on all items except H?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. I have a comment on F.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. All right. Let's go to F. Consider adoption of resolution approving the fiscal year 2526 San Bruno Community Foundation operating budget. Vice Mayor?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first want to thank the foundation for all their work. At the previous council meeting, we had a thorough discussion on the budget, and council expressed their appreciation for the grant for the fire station. I want to share the community's concern about future grants and scholarships, which have meant so much to our community over the years. I look forward to hearing how the foundation will control management costs as they wind down. So I just wanted to make sure I put that in there, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no public comments, any action on all items except H?
Move to approve.
Motion and seconded to approve all of consent with the exception of H. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimous, 5-0, recorded. Now we'll move on to item H. Consider adoption of resolution committing to take steps toward achieving compliance with the MTC's transit-oriented communities policy and as a condition for MTC to allocate regional discretionary funds to specific plan and zoning code amendments, parking management, and housing policy development projects. Councilmember Salazar?
I pulled this item because there were some concerns about the requirements that are being put forth in this thing, and whether or not this is something that needs to be approved immediately, or if it's something that we can wait on, because I was advised by our representative on the MTC that there may be some changes that could be coming forward on this. And so I believe we have a speaker, so we can hear from the speaker as well, but it seems to me that-
Motion and seconded to approve all of consent with the exception of H. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimous, 5-0 recorded. Now we'll move on to item H. Consider adoption of resolution committing to take steps toward achieving compliance with the MTC's transit-oriented communities policy and as a condition for MTC to allocate regional discretionary funds to specific plan and zoning code amendments, parking management, and housing policy development projects. Councilmember Salazar.
I pulled this item because there were some concerns about the requirements that are being put forth in this thing and whether or not this is something that needs to be approved immediately or if it's something that we can wait on, because I was advised by our representative on the MTC that there may be some changes that could be coming forward on this. And so I believe we have a speaker, so we can hear from a speaker as well, but it seems to me that this may be premature in approving this at this point.
Any other comments from colleagues at this moment? Let's hear from the speaker, please.
I have one speaker card, Gina Pappan. Would you please approach the podium?
Thank you. Bush, there we go. Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Gina Pappan. I am your representative on MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I am concerned, because I know as your commissioner, that this is a moving target, shall we say, at this point in time. The elements, the basic policies have been passed by MTC, but the compliance requirements are really moving along, and they will not be finalized till October. So we cannot guarantee that what you agree to in a resolution will be the same. And in the compliance requirements, there are certain financial requirements if you choose certain elements. You, as a city council, would have to set aside funding. Now, it doesn't apply to every element here, but the thing is to really identify closely which elements you will be relying on so that you know what the impact will be on your city. This was brought up in Milpitas last week. They, again, pushed it out for further information, because I think that is the most important aspect of what you have to do here tonight. There is no deadline as to the time in which you have to pass the resolution. That was confirmed at the Milpitas meeting last week. So I ask that you please do not pass a resolution until we have all the facts. We know all the impacts on the city of San Bruno. Some of the impacts are millions of dollars in funding that must be set aside should you pick certain elements. Other ones are hundreds of thousands of dollars. Again, not specific to all, and they try to say, "Well, you have a choice. You can pick certain ones." But again, whichever ones you pick, I would like to go over with your staff so that we know exactly what the commitment would be to the city of San Bruno. So as your commissioner, I am informed, and I know this is not going to be finalized until October of this year. So I would advise you, please do not pass a resolution until we have confirmation as to which elements you choose to abide by, which elements are going to impact your city the most. I'm happy to answer any questions, if that's allowed.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers?
No, there's speaker cards.
City manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this item can be continued. That's not a problem. As the council may recall, we continued this from two weeks ago. This was before you for consideration. And at the request of, I think it was Commissioner Pappan as well as others, we decided to take a pause. If the council's willing to hear from Community Development Director Peter Gilly on some of the timeliness issues here, perhaps that would help. But if the council just wants to continue this, you're welcome to do so. There's nothing critical that's going to affect us right away.
Thank you. Director, did you wish to address or have any thoughts or comments, please?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so this item's been brought before you on multiple joint study sessions with Planning Commission over the past year. This particular item is the acceptance of a grant. It does not obligate us to adopt anything. It obligates us to commit to try. So from staff's perspective and discussions with MTC staff, we don't see any reason not to pass it. At the same time, you don't have to pass it now. There have been multiple cities that have, and so from staff's perspective, this is not an issue if you do, and it is not necessarily an issue if you don't.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hamilton.
So just to be clear, sorry to call you back, the grant money that would be accepted here, is that budgeted in the next, you know, between now and October, when we might want to consider this again, knowing that it's finalized, as we hear from the commissioner? Is there, I just want to make sure that we're not, that we wouldn't be hamstringing work that your department is planning on doing between now and October?
So it is a moving target, as the speaker noted. There are things that have to happen by January 1st, and we have talked about the types of things we're going to do, the types of things that we would accept doing, barring some major change that the commission might make. We are prepared to move forward. If we don't accept the grant, then when the MTC selects the consultants to assist all the cities, we would not be able to start getting any assistance. That could end up with a delay, particularly considering we do take a break. We don't always meet every two weeks. Same time, us accepting this now doesn't commit us to actually adopt anything. It does allow us to be able to receive the funds as MTC provides it. This is different than other grants in that staff time won't be compensated. They are providing technical assistant resources, consultants that they are selecting that will help cities, and MTC will pay them directly. So there is a potential scenario where staff may have to do more work, because we didn't do this tonight, but at the same time, it's possible that more things get cleared up in the coming month, and we do this at that time. From my position, I would recommend, because there is no obligation to actually adopt anything, because we accept this grant, I would recommend you act on the resolution.
Any other questions, sir? Yes, thank you.
Vice Mayor. So I'm looking at the language, and now therefore be it resolved, right? So there's four items there. And it says intends, and then it's the grant that you mentioned. Then the third one says intends, and then the fourth thing is it authorizes the city manager to execute something, but doesn't mean that he has to do something. So if I'm hearing you right, this puts us in line for the grant, and it also allows us to change our mind at some certain point. It doesn't require us to do anything.
That is my understanding.
Okay.
As you note, that is what the resolution is saying.
Yes, I'm reading from it right now. So I just, like, I want to be respectful, and like, if this is necessary, then yes. But if it can wait, but it seems like this grant is important enough, $400,000, that it doesn't put that in jeopardy if we say no now, but it seems like there's no other reason to say no, because we're not really obligated to do anything here. Okay.
Councilmember Salazar.
In reading the, what was posted in the agenda, it says that we're considering an adoption of a resolution that commits us to take steps toward achieving compliance with the MTC's TOC policy. And we're hearing from our representative on the commission that the plan is basically not fully baked yet. And so, and there's also cost considerations that haven't been fully vetted out, at least from what I understand in the discussions we've had, and we have had multiple meetings on this. So this, I mean, we are essentially committing to accept their conditions, and some of their conditions, I think a lot of us, both on the Planning Commission and the council, had heartburn about, because, I mean, we're talking about limiting parking in some of the developments. I think that was one of the things that really stood out to a lot of us about, you know, do we want to really have parking maximums built into this when we have no idea what the demand will be, and is that going to hurt us in the future from actually getting any projects off the ground? So given that there's still some things that are unanswered, I don't think I'm comfortable with moving forward on this.
Can I ask a follow-up? Of course.
Just a follow-up question. So would accept, would taking this action tonight commit us to having parking maximums, if that's what the MTC decides?
Because of the way the resolution is described, no.
Okay. Thank you. I would have that, I would absolutely have that same concern.
Me too.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? I share Councilmember Salazar's point as well. I know we're not under a time constraint that I am aware of. And to me, when I have, we have two MTC commissioners, President of the Board, Canepa, and Gina Pappan, who has spoken, to me, that matters. And so to me, I am not comfortable moving this forward at this point. What is the wish of the council? Do we want to have it have continued or continuance or?
I'll make a motion to continue this to future time.
I'll second that. There's a motion and second to have item H continued. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none opposed on H, 5-0, and will be continued. Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner. Item seven, public hearings. Item A.
A, hold a public hearing and consider adoption of a resolution ordering the annual sewer services charges for fiscal year 2025 to '26 and delinquent sewer charges for fiscal year 2024 to '25 to be collected on the County of San Mateo property tax roll and authorizing certain actions in connection therewith.
And there were no other speakers on any other than consent, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Nick Pegaros. I'm the city's Administrative Services Director and Chief Financial Officer. The item before you this evening is, as the city clerk read, to authorize collection of sewer service charges on the property tax roll. This evening, the council will hold a public hearing on the collection of the service charges for next fiscal year, as well as collection of delinquencies for, pardon me, delinquencies for this current fiscal year. And we're seeking, we're recommending action that the council adopt a resolution ordering the collection of the sewer charges. The action this evening follows two past actions taken by the council. The first was Resolution Number 202376, which adopted a five-year sewer rate structure. In June of 2023, the council also adopted an ordinance that authorizes the collection of the sewer charges on the property tax roll. This was part of a city council priority initiative geared at improving operational efficiencies. And in addition to that, the collection of sewer service charges on the property tax roll results in effectively a guaranteed collection of revenue. We did place a public hearing notice in the newspaper on June 10 and, public hearing notice on June 10 and June 18. So the item this evening would authorize the collection of about $19.6 million of sewer charges for next fiscal year, which begins July 1. That would be paid through the property taxes that are paid in December and/or April, depending on whether the property owner pays in installments. Included in the charges are the July 1, 2025 rates. We have updated the service charge to reflect the water consumption in the winter months for this current year, which are January through April. Any residents that have the ability or have qualified for reduced rates through our income qualified rate reduction program, those charges have been adjusted. We've also made adjustments for suspected water leaks. Our staff goes through and looks at historical water consumption, and when they see a spike, they do reach out to the property owner and/or customer to see if there is a leak. And then finally, similar to last year, this action excludes the master metered homeowners' associations with more than 100 parcels. Perhaps the most significant aspect of this action that the council's taking this evening is based on action that we took right around this time last year, which authorized us to collect the sewer charges on the property tax bill. Previously, our delinquencies were well into the hundreds of thousands for sewer and water services. However, with this new collection approach, the delinquencies are slightly short of $13,000 for the entire city, which is quite remarkable. For council's reference, we pay the county about $15,000 to collect the property tax, the revenue on the property tax. This is the most important aspect of this program and serves the customers and ratepayers of sewer, over time through lower or greater collections and lower lost revenue. The report was posted detailing the charges by parcel was posted to the city's website, and it's available in the packet. Next steps, once council takes action to authorize collection on the property tax, we will transmit the levy to the county auditor controller, and it'll be included in the property tax bills that are delivered in October. And then there are two installments that the property owner may pay either full on December or half in December and half in April. So again, just to wrap up, seeking council to hold a public hearing on the collection of the fee of the sewer service charges and then adopt a resolution authorizing staff to move forward. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there any speakers, please?
I have one speaker card. Would George Martlin please approach the podium?
Mr. Mur, members of the council?
Mr. Mur, members of the council, thank you for allowing me to speak on this occasion. Last year, my wife and I, who had owned a home since 1975, opened up our tax bill, and we were shocked at, all of a sudden, there was a huge amount, I think it was close to $2,000, for wastewater. We'd never been billed. The prior gentleman talks about collections. Collections usually come when a bill has not been paid. The fact of the matter is this, is that there's no bill. The method that the city of San Bruno uses to calculate the bill is a guesstimate. My understanding is they take four months of the year and then average that out and project it out. If you had Bank of America on your credit card saying, "Well, I'll tell you what, you pay, you spent X amount of money for the first four months of the year, therefore, we'll bill you at that same rate for the next 12 months." I think the federal government and everybody else would be up in arms. There's a total lack of foreplay here, is there's, first of all, in 1978, Proposition 13 was passed with the sole purpose or primary purpose of making property taxes predictable and planned. There was no publication that we received. Furthermore, my wife and I rent out the property, and we had contracted with the tenants that they would pay the utility. All of a sudden, now that lease that we had had been invalidated by the city of San Bruno, which they had no right to do. It's all very well, this gentleman said, "Well, we were delinquent. My wife and I, in all the years we have owned the property, have always paid our water bill and subsequently the sewer bill." Is that this is collective punishment. This is what, you're taking the rest of the city, for the minority of people who are not abiding by the rules, and then punishing the remainder of the community. It clouds the title of the property. It's impossible to predict if you have a leak, if a toilet leaks, is there's no way, we can use thousands of gallons, and you won't find that out until later on. And it just... And it just induces financial hardship.
Your, your time has expired. Did you have any last few words?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Martin?
Thank you. The eminent Chief of Police and Fire Chief earlier on talked about safe and sane when it referred to fireworks. This method that you use is either safe nor sane. And I would encourage you to follow the example of the Fire Chief and the Chief of Police in, in your billing methods.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Martin. Any other speaker cards?
No other speaker cards.
CFO? Please? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If you can, oh, yes. You heard the speaker. Is there anything that you would like to add? I mean, I understand too, we all are in the same situation. I know I did receive a notice, you know, saying, hey, here's what's guesstimated. Mine was 1,200 as an example plus, and that was going to be on my property tax. But then when you get it, of course, it is a reminder and an awakening. But any comments you wish to express after hearing Mr. Martin?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of points that I would, would share with you as council and members of the public. The, the method that is used to calculate wastewater charges is vetted. We contract with a, with a rate study consultant to ensure that the methodology that we're using is, is reasonable in its ability to collect the costs of providing the service to, to each, each household. And, you know, with, when it comes to water, it's easy to measure the amount of water going in. It's, it's very difficult to measure the amount of water leaving a property by other means, namely sewer. And so that, our methodology, we, has been consistent, to my knowledge, well over 20 years, well over 25 years, we've used this, this methodology. It is a methodology that's generally accepted as defensible in its application to collect, to collect sewer charges. And while the delinquency is, is, collections are a considerable factor, you know, the genesis of this really came from a desire to reduce costs to the overall enterprise through more efficient billing practices. And so this is our second year. Last year, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, you received a postcard saying this is your estimated, or this is what will be on your property tax bill. We have not budgeted for that exercise this year. We, we saw that as a transition process. However, that is something that we can make more readily available on the website, so folks, so folks can find what is charged for their property.
Thank you. Questions, comments from colleagues? Councilmember Hamilton?
So you mentioned that the, the billing method that we use for sewer, that we've used for 20 years or more, is the generally accepted practice. So I would assume that our, our neighboring communities pretty much use the same methodology?
I would say there are several. I don't know if it's the predominant, but it is. The sewer average, I'm not an engineer, but just, I play one on TV. But, you know, one of the challenges with measuring effluent is that it has lots of stuff in it, which then makes it very difficult to measure, to meter. So there needs to be a proxy to measure. And, and the input is when water is supposed to be lowest consumption, which is the winter, which are the winter months.
Understood. So I was asking that question so that I could ask this question or confirm my understanding. The collection of the sewer charges on the property tax roll is the, is how predominantly our neighbors all collect it. We were one of, in fact, were we one of the last cities in the county to move to this methodology after quite a long time?
Correct. We were one of the, one of the last remaining cities or agencies, because there are some public, there are special districts that also collect their sewer on their property tax bill.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, you had your opportunity, so. No, well, he's, he's, he's part of city staff. He's giving the presentation. So, okay, all right. Sir, we appreciate your comments, but at this time now, the city council was asking questions to staff. Other questions? Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. Got two things that wanted a clarification on. So you initially get an estimate, right? In your sewer bill, so you, is that correct? You get an estimate? Like what's in the, what's in this report? There's like tons of parcel numbers, and there's a number there that's what is the estimated charge?
No, that's the, that's the actual charge.
Okay. And, and so, let's say a house was vacant for six months. How would that charge be justified if it was vacant and there was no water use? Is there a process where somebody could say, hey, you know, I have a rental property, and it was vacant for so much, so many months? Look at my bill, there's, I didn't use any water, there was nothing going on? Is there a way for that to be revised and updated so that the costs are reflective of what was actually transmitted through the pipe?
Yes, Vice Mayor Medina, there, there is an appeal process that we will go back and look at the water consumption. There may have been a leak, there may have been a vacancy in the, in the property. I think that because this is, the, what I would like to highlight is that the waste, the sewer charge, the way we're approaching it and the calculation hasn't changed. It's the same process. And those examples that you provided were the same examples that may have existed in the past. And of course, we have a, a, we work with our customers to, to make sure that they're charged appropriately.
Great. And for, for the public, the point that we went to this, and you mentioned in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that this was costing the city, which costs all of us. So it's in the couple, 200,000 range, 300,000, 250? Is it in that range, a couple hundred, how many?
So previous to the transfer to the property tax, it was, it was in the 500 to 600,000.
Okay, for 600,000. So I could say that's one of the primary objectives for, for me to vote to support it and why I will continue supporting this. This is something that makes sure that for the majority, let me restate that, all the charges are recovered in our sewer. And if there is a problem with an individual sewer calculation, there's an appeal process that people can go through. So I would think Mr. Martin might be able to look into that perhaps. Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last year before we adopted the resolution, there was a notice that went to the residents. This year, before we approved the resolution, when is the notice set to go out, or was it already out?
So the notice for, to transfer the property tax, the sewer charge to the property tax was provided last year. And this year, by, according to the direction that we have on notifying, on notifying residents, we, the, there is not a requirement to issue the notice this year. So we did not send a notice this year for the property tax bill. However, we will be sending a notice on the rate increases.
Thank you.
Is there an opportunity within the utility billing to remind, alert that, as a reminder about this? Because, I mean, folks are happy when they see with the, opened up the utility bill, but Recology's billing us a separate sewer is now on the property tax. But it's just as a reminder to the community. Does that make sense to them?
Yeah, we can, we can put an insert into the bill so that residents know it's a reminder that the sewer is not included in the bill and that it will be collected, collected by different means.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Hamilton?
Following on that, could that, could that reminder also include the link on the web, the website where people can go look up and see what the exact number is? They can budget for it?
I'm fairly confident we could put a QR code and perhaps a friendly URL, but the, the, yes, we can, we can look at that.
Great, thank you.
Other questions or comments from colleagues? Again, we heard from our speaker. I'm going to close the public hearing and then bring it back to council with staff's recommendation if we wish to proceed with the adoption of the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second?
Motion and second, and to adopt the resolution. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? 50 recorded, passed unanimously. We're going to move on to Item B, please.
Item B, hold a public hearing on the fiscal year 2025 to 26 capital improvement program budget and consider approving, one, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025 to 26 budget; two, a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025 to 26 appropriations limit of $59,038,112.
Mr. Adam?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I am Brian Adam, Assistant to the City Manager, here to provide you a brief presentation on capital improvement program budget, operating budget changes since your last regular meeting on June 10, as well as some enabling resolutions. So for today, the objective is basically to present those materials and to ask that you hold a public hearing regarding the proposed capital improvement program budget for fiscal year 2026, as well as to go over some of the enabling resolutions. I'll provide a brief overview of the capital improvement program budget, the operating budget, those enabling resolutions, the recommendation for tonight, which is to hold that public hearing and to adopt those resolutions, and then opening it up for questions. So for the objective, as noted, is to receive this presentation and then to hold a public hearing on the capital improvement program, and then to adopt those enabling resolutions, which I'll explore a little more in detail in the end of the presentation. So for the capital improvement program budget, these numbers have largely not changed. The significant change that has been highlighted is an increase in $2 million. This increase reflects the so-called San Bruno triple flip. So you've heard a lot about the San Bruno triple flip when it comes to the operating budget. And the operating budget reflects those numbers, but the proposed capital improvement program budget that was inside the proposed budget does not include those numbers. So the slight changes in this table is basically to account for the San Bruno triple flip. So in that sense, it's not necessarily a material change. It's just bringing the capital improvement program budget in alignment with the proposed budget that includes that San Bruno triple flip. And once again, this is the CIP summary. So at the top, the adopted budget from the previous fiscal year, the actual expenditures, and this is inception to date. So it's all the money that was budgeted historically for these projects minus all the money that's historically been spent on those projects over carrying over into the next fiscal year, the amount that's been requested or proposed for the coming fiscal year. This includes 16 new projects and then requests for funds for 13 existing projects. And then at the bottom, the number for the proposed budget of the capital improvement program. And with that, I will bring it back to the operating budget. So what is there to cover? The changes to the operating budget made since city council's last meeting on June 10 is basically to account for instructions that were given to staff. So the instructions that were given to staff were basically to take one of council's initiatives, the reassessment of the residential parking permit program, and to basically say, save that for a later day, and to use those funds that were budgeted for that program or initiative to go for some other items. And that, as well as accounting for basically internal service funds like the V, the garage fund inside the city, that has raised the operating budget total to 291 million. And then at the very bottom, just the updated amounts for capital improvements. And so what were some of those changes, as well as the different initiatives or instructions from council? So one change to the budget that is, one change in the proposed budget is basically pushing back that reassessment of the residential parking permit program. Those funds are then being reassigned to basically bring lighting to two paths that are near the Recreation and Aquatic Center. One of those is by Diamond 2, and the other one is to the overflow parking lot that's across the way from the Recreation and Aquatic Center. And then there is the repair of downtown lights along San Mateo Avenue. So staff in a digest to council noted that there is currently one identified light that could use a lamp replacement or repair. But as a part of this work, staff will also go review where there are opportunities to potentially improve the brightness along San Mateo Avenue in those parking lots. Staff were also instructed to basically bring about Chamber of Commerce-style events inside San Bruno. And then something else that was also directed, or some other directions that council gave to staff were basically to consider postponing the Phase 2, Phase 2A replacement of the regulated output streetlight system, contingent on state revenues from the in lieu of vehicle license fee funds. And as noted earlier, basically, some vehicles for our internal garage fund were not accounted for inside the operating budget. And basically, the, close to 40%, 43% of those expenditures are related to enterprise budget, but those have now been wrapped into the operating budget. And that covers all the changes that have been made to the budget since council's last meeting on June 10. And what's left in this presentation is basically adopting the appropriations limit for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. The appropriations limit, also known as the GAN limit, is the result of Prop 4 passed in 1979. It basically sets a limit for how much money agencies can appropriate each year. It's kind of like a spending limit. Basically, our limit, how is this limit calculated? The limit is calculated by using last year's limit. It's then increased by two factors, Consumer Price Index and the change in population in the area. Last year's limit was 55.31 million. And then after multiplying our Consumer Price Index change and population change, this coming limit, or the limit for fiscal year 2026, is 59.03 million. The next step of that calculation is basically identifying from all the different revenues that the city brings in, which ones are subject to the limit? $46.73 million are subject to that limit, which means that we're well below the appropriations limit. The only thing that's left in that is basically for council to adopt a resolution adopting that appropriations limit for the coming fiscal year. So those enabling actions. The two enabling actions are a resolution adopting the operating budget and capital improvement program budget for fiscal year 2025 to 2026, and a resolution adopting the appropriations limit. We must adopt the resolution, we must adopt an appropriations limit, and this is just the appropriations limit for the fiscal year 2026 based on those changes. And the recommendation tonight is to hold a public hearing regarding the capital improvement program budget proposed for fiscal year 2025 to 2026, and then to consider adopting the enabling resolutions for the coming fiscal year. And with that, I will open up to questions before council considers a public hearing.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Are there any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards.
Anybody wishing to speak on this topic? Seeing none, we'll bring it to council for comments or questions. And I know we have gone through this at a prior meeting. We were here till 11:30 or so, not just on this topic, but we did have an opportunity. So with that, questions, comments? Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. Yes, we did spend a lot of time talking about this. I just want a little bit of clarification. I don't see our public works superintendent, or director. Is he over there? Oh, there he is. Good, good. So, so the question basically is, looking at page five of the presentation of the carryover from 2425 of 7.19 million, and then the new request of 15, making it 22 million. Is that, the question is, is that work not completed from 2425? Because $22 million of paving in one year. I know we love paving, but that's an incredible high amount. And is that, can that, is that realistically going to happen? I am glad that we have budgeted for it. Just wanted to see if. I am glad that we have budgeted for it, just wanted to see if those numbers are accurate.
I guess, thanks for that question, Vice Mayor Medina. I guess I would just wanted to quickly clarify for the carryover. It's, the carryover is a significant amount of funds, but it does reflect the, basically, for all the money that's been historically budgeted for those projects in the street program, minus the inception to date, the significant increase in new requests are basically Measure Q funds.
Yes.
So that reflects, basically, last year voters wanted more work on streets and paving, and that significant allocation of funds is basically putting in more into that streets program. And with that, I'll hand it over to Director Matt Lee to talk about that.
Sure, thank you.
Matt Lee, Public Works Director. Mr. Brian Adam was correct. The carryover kind of is a reflective of all streets projects. We can't mix streets with just paving, right? Because you have, you have all the other projects that are carrying over as well. So it's the entire street program.
So of that 22, that's, are we going to complete 22 million in projects? That's the, that's the, that's the plan? I mean...
That's the recommended budget.
Okay, okay. That's incredible. I want to...
Yeah, so...
We're going to see a lot of paving next year. Incredible amount. That's twice the amount that we've ever done.
Correct. I want to emphasize again, not the entire amount in the streets category is paving.
Okay, all right.
Right, there's, there's other projects involved. For example, say, Routsa School.
Okay.
You know, some of the TSPC items that are there, and a bunch of other stuff.
I just got a little excited seeing that number. So it is, it's a beautiful number. So that's my first question. I could go ahead and go to the next one, Mr. Mayor. So this is a little clarification on one of the projects for the downtown street lighting in the parking lot, and it was my understanding, or my intention, to not just repair one location, that the idea is looking at it of how we improve the lighting in our parking lots, and how we could do that upgrading the system to solar lighting, and if we do one parking lot with that 50,000, which I think should be enough, that would there be enough, in the event there was additional funds for that, of that 50, to go ahead and try a pilot to put streetlight on San Mateo Avenue with solar lights to see how well they work? Because I think, I think my objective there is to improve the lighting in our downtown, because in our downtown, it gets, there's various dark spots, and how could we lighten that up so, you know, people can see down the street a little bit more and be willing to stay downtown longer? So just wanted clarification on that to make sure we're on the same page.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. A couple of things. So to remind the council, last, two weeks ago, the council brought this from the DIA, so this was not a staff recommendation, and it was to put more light, to review the lighting in the current parking lots and to put more light in the parking lots where we found deficiencies. We talked about it being a pilot program. I think it was Councilmember Alvarez with the Vice Mayor sort of in agreement that that's what we were talking about. So really, we have $50,000 to light the parking lots. Nothing for San Bruno Avenue, nothing for San Mateo Avenue. That wasn't, my understanding, that was never the request.
I understand that. It wasn't fixing one street, one light.
No, no, if I can, what the digest item said last week for the council was, we went out and explored the parking lots. We did a review of all of them to figure out what was the existing condition, to understand what we might need for lighting. Turns out, they are, they are all lit, or they have lighting. One of them has a failed light that I think Public, I think Public Works was going to explore fixing sooner than later, but I think the bigger question was, can we put more light?
Yes.
Into these parking lots for $50,000? That was also going to be theoretically solar-based. And all that, we're just going, this is two weeks into an assignment.
No, I get it. I just wanted to make sure, like, because we have it in writing and it's not very clear as it is that we're talking about right now. So I'm satisfied with it now, with that clarification.
Any other questions or comments from colleagues? Councilmember Salazar.
Couple of things. First off, I had to just comment that I'm not completely in favor of what was done with the triple flip, or how we're going to use some of the, the Measure G money specifically, but I do also understand that there are budget challenges, and there are constraints, and there's a lot of momentum around these programs that we don't want to lose, and so I will accept what's, what's being proposed, although I'm not, it wouldn't have been my first choice in, in, in funding those things that way. So I just wanted to state that, but overall, I'm willing to go along with the plan and give it a chance. Regarding the CIP in general, I wanted just to make an observation that it does seem that we carry a lot of things forward. There's, there's a lot out there that just kind of stagnates. It seems like it's stagnating. I know there's small progress happening in some of these, but we're adding on to it. I was hoping that going into this next fiscal year, we can start seeing perhaps a little more regular reporting on each of these programs, so that we can see not only how much, how much is being invested, but also how much progress we're making on some of these. And I know there's a lot of them, and I know it's a big ask to, to track these things, but I think some of this, some of this is already happening, that it's just a sharing of data so that we can see more clearly how these things move along as they, as they work through the system. I think that would be helpful to me, to just understand that we're not, that we're not overcommitting on some of these things. And I know that resources are constrained, but I just want to have a better understanding as we move forward on these things, how, how that's all playing out, and if any reprioritization needs to happen, better to know it ahead of time than after the fact. On, on some of these things, you know, we, we talked very generally about some of the projects, but it would be of interest to me if we could bring some of those back for more detailed discussion. Specifically, I'm thinking about, you know, our investments in parks and how that prioritization is going to happen, which parks we're going to focus on, what equipment we're talking about, what improvements we're talking about. I'd like to have just an opportunity to hear more about how that process is going to be vetted. I know that there's a lot of interest in the community about specific projects, and so I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to get that input in as well. So... The other thing, last thing, there's, there's still a huge body of work that we're not programming, but we know that needs to happen. And I'm just going to throw this out as a sort of a very broad request about maybe having some way of understanding what that unmet need could cost us over the next several years, so looking forward another decade. Just understanding if we wanted to address this, and rather than just keep kicking the can down the road, understanding what it would take to actually start chipping away at that over, you know, very long horizon, but just putting, putting a price tag on these things could help, and just understanding, you know, over, over the years, you know, what that investment should, should look like. I think the taxpayers have been pretty generous in helping us fund these things once we've been able to quantify, and I think trying to put some more detail, better understanding around some of those other projects might help in trying to address those as well. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of things if I can, and thank you, Councilmember Salazar. Sort of in order of, of your suggestions, one of the comments you made, had to do with the backlog, not necessarily the unfunded backlog, but the backlog of work and whatnot. One of the challenges, as you know, we talked about during the CIP development process, was capacity. It's, and it's a staffing capacity question is what this comes down to, also dollars, but the dollars are set aside now. So now it's a matter of how do we grow the pipeline? If the council adopts tonight's budget, we are adding two more engineers into the capacity making process here, so that should help. One, I think there was a question asked in the past of the, the HR manager about what's the hardest positions to hire. I think we made great strides in hiring engineers, but we still struggle to hire the engineers we need, and so, again, we will continue to invest in that area so that we can widen the pipeline. That's number one. Number two, the parks assessment, you know, we brought this to the council maybe two months ago through, through Community Services Director Carlin's presentation on parks assessment. Unfortunately, you know, the need is there, just the money is not, so, you know, how do we start to prioritize that? And I think Travis's team is working on trying to come back with something. Number three, I believe in the budget message, we talked about, you know, when do we have a conversation about another revenue measure to figure out how to pay for some of these important items? And the unmet capital, I think your closing comment, Councilmember Salazar, had to do with, well, okay, so what aren't we doing that is on our radar? And we do have an unmet capital, or unfunded capital list that I don't, I'm not sure if we've updated the values on that list lately. It's okay if we either have or haven't, and it's okay if we haven't. But one of the things, I think we stick with like, you know, a new city hall is 70 million. Well, we probably plugged that number in 15 years ago, and it's probably a different number today. I think the capital numbers can be overwhelming when people start to see it, and it feels like we just can't possibly tax enough to pay the ever increasing costs. However, it doesn't mean we shouldn't come back to the council and provide you guys with these updates. So we can provide more regular updates on the CIP progress through the year. We can also provide updates on sort of the unfunded capital and what those needs look like. Again, I think there was a topic raised in my transmission, transmittal letter to you about when do we ask the question about another revenue measure? And it's, it may be premature, but the sooner we get this information in front of you, maybe it starts to make more sense. So I think I addressed all your comments.
That did cover it, thank you.
Okay.
And I would just say that on that, that big unfunded thing, I think there's going to be projects in there that are probably never going to happen, and we should just admit to ourselves that, you know, you know, the taxpayers are not going to fund certain things, and we have to maybe figure out what we do instead, and, you know, what, what it would cost, you know, what does that maintenance cost for a building that's crumbling versus replacing it? And then you maybe frame the conversation a little, a little differently, but I think understanding what those needs are, how they stack against each other, and which ones are, which ones we might be able to address, and which ones are just going to be fantasy items that, you know, they're just not going to happen.
That's fair.
Thank you.
And if I can, Mr. Mayor, one more just comment. I will remind this council, though, that you guys have taken some bold moves with regards to the enterprise funds. You know, you have raised fees now for enterprise, for the enterprise fund so that we can make those investments. So on the water and wastewater side, we are certainly much better positioned financially. We need to get the capacity up on the staffing side so that we can keep moving forward with those kinds of investments. It's really the non-enterprise funds, which fall basically to the general fund, where we will probably always struggle, and we're not alone. We are hardly the only city facing these kinds of conversations, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't still ask those hard questions and answer them. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to circle back on the topic that Vice Mayor Medina had raised earlier regarding the 50,000 allocated one for the parking lot. I was under the impression that I was asking for an upgrade, like a pilot upgrade, instead of a repair, because we are trying to see for that upgrade if, if that upgrade will basically light up more than what we have now in each parking lot? And if that pilot program worked, then we can use the rest of that 50,000, whatever's left on the, from the $50,000 on the other parking lot? Or can we alternate some of the broken light, streetlights on San Mateo Downtown? Not necessarily spend to all our parking lot, not the on-street, but our city parking lot.
Right. And Councilmember Alvarez, I thought I said this, but perhaps just to be, or I thought, excuse me, Director Lee said this. I think what we're trying to do is figure out the existing condition on the parking lots in the downtown, and then upgrade the illumination of them where it seems to make sense, and doing so with a budget of $50,000, which is what's been sort of granted for us for the moment as a pilot program. And if it proves successful and we can make the impacts that we need to make, we can come back to the council for a greater ask if indeed that's, that's what, what we need.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Vice Mayor, second bite of the apple.
Well, it's not a real bite. It's, it's just acknowledging.
It's a nibble.
No, 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 it isn't. Honestly, watch. I'm going to prove you both wrong here. In the clarification, Councilman Salazar mentioned the budget, and so, I'm sorry, the budget for recreation, right? And the upgrade that we had a presentation on it, yet we haven't received the analysis of what the assessment is. And so we have a certain amount of funds in there that we're looking at. I'm sorry, I wrote it down here, page 193. And we're looking at 275,000 for this year, and then, you know, anticipated future requests is our 6 million, right? So how much can we really do? And I, I'm asking in the public now, because I was able to briefly, like, two minutes speak to our Director Carlin about this, so I just wanted to become more familiar with what, what is that going to look like? Because we haven't yet, yet had the assessment, and here is 275,000, and like, what is that, what's that projected to get? What are we going to get for that approximately?
Sure. So as I mentioned to you, Vice Mayor Medina, before the meeting, is the items that we put forward this year are things that rose to the top, that were very apparent, that needed to be taken care of in the here and now. Our, the typical lifespan for a playground is about 10 to 12 years. Most of our playgrounds are approximately 20 years old. So that's definitely something that we have to start triaging and getting through those playground replacements, because as they age, they get harder and harder to buy parts for, more elements have to be taken out for safety's sake, so that's one thing that's really a high priority list. The other thing is, is I don't know if you've noticed, but we have a tremendous problem with off-leash dogs in this city.
Off-leash dogs?
Off-leash dogs, yep. And our off, and what I hear from a lot of the residents is that we don't have a sufficient dog park. So, you know, we have the dog park design in there as one of those things. So we did take some of those elements that we already heard from the park assessment and pushed those forward to this year. The next step in the park assessment is that they are prioritizing some premier projects and giving us some cost estimates, so that way we have some of those items that we could bring forward to the council for consideration, and then showing some secondary projects that would be beneficial to the community as well.
If I can ask a follow-up question to that then, is when, when will the assessment be shared with the public?
Sure. So we're looking at probably wrapping that up sometime in August or September.
Okay, right. Thank you. See?
That was a follow-up to the nibble. Any other questions or comments? This is a, is a public hearing. There are no speakers, so we'll go ahead and close public hearing, bring it back to the council for any action.
Given the complexity of this item, I'll ask the city attorney is saying, I move to approve the item as read by the city clerk, sufficient?
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Hamilton, that would be sufficient.
Then I'll say that.
And I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimous, five oh. Thank you very much to staff and Mr. Adam. I know that's not the role that you expected, but we thank you for your presentation and thank you for stepping in and, and still doing what you're doing and doing what else you're doing. So, thank you. And thank you to CFO and to the team for all their work in the finance and the budget. With that, we'll move on to conduct of business.
Item A, consider adoption of a resolution amending rates and regulations for paid parking on city-owned or controlled... parking on city-owned or controlled on-and-off-street parking facilities, removal of kiosks on El Camino Real, and determining the project is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. One slide. I've tried to narrow it down. So you might recall that Councilmember Alvarez asked that this last two remaining questions come back. And so this is information that you've seen before, and we're just looking for some council discussion and determination on these last two items with the paid parking program.
You get the award for tonight for the quickest and most succinct presentation. Thank you. Questions or comments, Vice Mayor?
Not a question really, but basically was going to, trying to start this conversation. This is a topic that we've discussed again thoroughly in the past. And if there aren't any other discussion, I'd be happy to make a motion.
I have a comment though.
Please. I appreciate that. There's a motion on the floor. Does somebody want a second, and then we'll go on to questions on the motion?
I will withdraw.
No problem. Councilmember Hamilton?
So I just wanted, just for clarification, and I know it's, it's how it's intended, but it's written on the slide again. So it says, for number one, include a 50 cent rate for off-street parking lot spaces if using coins, and include pass-through of transaction fee for credit card payment for that one transaction only. I just want to make sure that we're really super clear on that. Because there was some folks online who were confused and thinking that we were going to be passing through credit card payments all over the place. I know we're not doing that. I just wanted just to be crystal, crystal clear of what we're talking about.
Great, thank you. Thank you for clarifying. Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you. On that same point, wouldn't it be extremely confusing to people if one set of machines does one thing and other machines do other things? I think we talked about the limitations of what you can place on a sign and, you know, what you have to explain to people. And I understand the goal is, of course, to make this program successful and to make it more tolerable. So I definitely understand that there are pain points and that we are trying. I think all five of us here want to make this successful. We want to make it easy for people to do. But I'm concerned that in our attempt to try to solve the problem, we're only going to make it more complicated. And, I mean, at the end of the day, this is so that we can adjust a price from four quarters down to two quarters. 50 cents is not a lot of money. And this is a lot of effort to save people 50 cents when they visit downtown. And I understand that some people see it as a value, some people think this is a value thing because they're, they're being forced to buy two hours of time. But honestly, it's, it's just, you're paying a dollar to park, and I think our old police chief explained this, you know, pretty, pretty well. You don't have to stay two hours. You can stay two hours for a dollar. But, I mean, basically, the, the price of admission is a dollar, and you can stay as long as you want. And trying to adjust that seems, I don't know, it's a bit arbitrary. And I know, I've heard a few people mention the same concept, and I understand why some of my colleagues might want to champion this. But I'm just thinking of all of the things that we can do to make the program better, is this really where we want to focus our effort? All for, you know, saving somebody two quarters when they visit downtown? And regarding the El Camino portion of it, that one, I'm still not understanding who benefits from that. And we, we are definitely going to lose some revenue on doing it. It's going to cost us money to remove the meters, but that one, I just don't know who benefits from making that change. And so that's why I've been opposed to moving that one forward. So, thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Salazar. I understand the logic of not changing the $1 to 50 cents, but I think this is a positive approach to invite more people to visit our downtown, since we have been hearing a lot of requests, a lot of complaints about meter malfunctioning. And I know that we haven't had any issue that we heard recently, but I think this is a good approach for the community and listening to them, listening to their requests. There may be a positive approach to this change.
Any other questions or comments? I've said it in the past, so I'm on the same thing. I just don't think the kiosk system, we should spend all that money and then find we need to keep a couple, or somebody changes their mind, so. But I think we've all heard folks, so is there any, there's no speaker cards? Any action by council on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution as read by the city clerk. I believe she read it. Yeah, thank you.
Second?
There is a motion and a second to adopt the resolution as read by the city clerk. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. So 3-2, descending is Salazar and Rico Medina. Item nine, council committee report outs. Seeing none. Council comments. Mr. Hamilton?
I will remind everyone that on this coming Saturday is the monthly pancake breakfast at the American Legion. 15 bucks for adults, $6 for kids. It's a great deal because the money is going to, it's all you can eat. The bacon cooked by your handsomest council member. And the money goes to support our veterans through the American Legion. So please come and join us.
Mr. Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it's a wonderful breakfast location, and someone else cooks the omelet, so come on down. Happy to make it to order. I have two comments. One is easy to say, it's tomorrow, second harvest grocery distribution at Bel Air Elementary School. It will run from 2:00 to 4:00 o'clock. It's at the back of Bel Air at 453rd Avenue. We're anticipating up to 330 families to pick up groceries. We are also in need of volunteers. We've had an incredible number of volunteers show up. And if you need food or want to help, tomorrow, come on down at Bel Air, and you can do either or both. The second thing is on a more serious note. So San Bruno has an incredibly diverse community, and some of our residents are genuinely fearful about their future due to their immigration status. It is extremely important for everyone to do their best to remain calm and become better informed of their rights. Although the city of San Bruno does not have immigration resources, there are many organizations in the region that have the legal expertise to help. It is very important to know that police departments across California and here in San Bruno do not enforce civil immigration laws. In fact, state and local law enforcement are prohibited from investigating, interrogating, detaining, or arresting individuals solely for immigration purposes, or inquiring about their immigration status. So please, do not hesitate to contact the police if you are a victim of a crime, a witness or need of police assistance. Our police serve to protect life, property, and public peace for all members of our community, regardless of anyone's immigration status. Despite the high tension and frustration, please exercise your First Amendment rights and peace. Thank you.
Any other comments? A little bit on that note, and I think you've already articulated it. SB 54 is for the state of California, which prohibits. I want to say that today I spoke to former police chief, Ryan Johansson. I spoke to former interim chief, Susan Anaheimer. I spoke to our current chief. None of them, from then to now, have had any knowledge, sightings of anyone in the community coming in for immigration. It is also imperative, and the current chief said, that folks realize that if they need assistance or help, that they're there to preserve and protect. And they will continue to do so. Immigration status is not a question, and it's not an issue when they respond. That's what they do. And there are know-your-rights, it is on the website. I have been in touch with, from supervisors in the county to other local mayors, school boards, school districts, and just to keep appraised of what is happening and as more information comes out. But I also want to assure the community that the police are here and ready and able to serve the community at any need and at any time. With that, there be no other comments. Staff, thank you. It's not even 9:00. What do you guys want to do? No. I want to thank everybody for being here. Thank you for the lift and the budget. And Dan and Brian, thank you for the other tasks that you also do, so I appreciate that all very much. With that, please enjoy the rest of the week. And this meeting will be adjourned to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held July 8th, right here, 7:00. Meeting adjourned.